I'll call this meeting the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Paul.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Stare.
Tralka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us for a moment to reflect on today's actions. Please transfer the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the boardroom or online that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation today from the UNI Local Foods Program.
You want to hit Sharon first?
Oh my gosh, this is the smallest mouse.
There we go. Awesome. All right. Great. Thank you, everybody, for having us. We are from the C-triple-E, so Center for Energy and Environmental Education, and we'll introduce our everybody that's here. But before I do that, just as a reminder, we're part of C-triple-E at UNI, and we're just one of the programs that we're going to talk about today, which is the Local Food Program. All right. So I'm Jody Higric, and I'm the Local Food Program Manager/Value Chain Coordinator. And then I have, well, we should probably talk to him, Mike.
Yeah. I'm Catherine Gilbury. I'm the most recently created position at UNI, so I'm the Local Food Access Coordinator, and kind of taking over as Kamir's retiring some of his local food garden, really boots-on-the-ground community-based projects.
And Sarah?
Hi, I'm Sarah Steymeyer. I'm the Nurish Iowa Vista Program Coordinator. I had to look at my long title. I work on a lot of statewide initiatives, partnering with nonprofits to make change in our food system.
And then we brought two AmeriCorps Vista members with us today, Jamie and Karina. All right. So we're just going to do an overview of some of the programming that we have at the Local Food Program, and they're broke out by what you see here on our mission statement. So we're really working to work, impact that food system through consumer education, working with farmers, and working through projects that are going to increase the economic development of Black Hawk County. So helping consumers choose local, and we do that through a variety of projects, a variety of events, and we're working to do that, again, a lot through the increased knowledge. So we host four events each year with collaboration with partners. Everything that we do at the C-triple-E, we're not doing by ourselves. We're doing with partners in our community. Then we also participate in a lot of events that are held throughout the Cedar Valley, and a lot of that is that consumer education. You know, where can people find local? What does local mean? Our branding is grow, eat, play. When we talk about how do you find local foods in the Cedar Valley, we have directories that we put together each year that we have farmers in the directory, we have restaurants, we have grocery stores, organizations that are helping the local food system. And then, and usually about 1,000 of those go out throughout Black Hawk County. And then we also run the CVR-FFN, Social Media. So CVR-FFN is Cedar Valley Regional Food and Farm Network, and that is us collectively working as a coalition in Cedar Valley and surrounding counties. And then we also have a newsletter that we put out every month, again, working to advertise our events, other local food events, helping people find their local food products, talking about farmer's market season, talking about where you find products off-season, too. All right. And then we also increased local spending, and I'm going to let Catherine talk a little bit about that before I jump back in.
Yeah. So we are really, you know, energized by building up the economic development within Black Hawk County, and I think, well, surrounding counties as well. So we work not just in Black Hawk County, but also surrounding counties, but helping support our local farmers. And one of the ways that has been found to be, like, federally successful are nutrition incentive programs, essentially incentivizing folks with limited means or low income to be able to purchase from local farms. So the one that we organize out of UNI is called Veggie Vouchers. This was started back in 2016, and since 2016, $116,000 have gone to local farmers. And the way this program is implemented is we have a variety of host sites that include our local clinics, Unity Point Clinics, People's Clinic, Mercy One, and then some additional community-based organizations, Black Hawk County Public Health, Boserto Behavioral Health, and Jesse Cosby Center. We actually give these vouchers to those host sites. They identify the clients that are food insecure, that have diet-related health conditions, and then those clients are able to go purchase fruits and vegetables at local farmers markets. So this has had a really big impact. The return on investment, I think, is, that's been found by the GUSNIP program, is like 1.6. A similar nutrition incentive program is Double Up Food Bucks, which is not one that UNI coordinates. It's coordinated by Healthy Estate Initiative, but we had a role in making sure that the very first year the state of Iowa rolled out Double Up Food Bucks, the Waterloo Urban Farmers Market and the Greens to Go Stand were markets that could participate in Double Up Food Bucks. And this program works by folks who are already on SNAP-EBT. When they purchase fruits and vegetables, they get an extra dollar match, up to $10 a day, that they can use to purchase more fruits and vegetables. So this is now operating, it's not in all 99 counties, I think it's in like 35, so it really comes down to farmers' markets or another agency in the community that can bring Double Up Food Bucks to the community. And then this other picture is from when we were operating the Greens to Go Stand. So a lot of the projects that we have kind of started as AmeriCorps programs, and Sarah will talk a little bit about that later, but they're things that are, like, really easy to implement, that can operate with a small budget, and really energize our AmeriCorps members and UNI students to have agency in their community and find ways to make a difference. So Veggie Vouchers was started as an AmeriCorps program. The Greens to Go Stand was started as an AmeriCorps program that was then taken over by Dequan Campbell and rolled into his farm business after he served as a Vista. And our vistas also had a role with Double Up Food Bucks and working directly with farmers and farmer's market managers to train them on how to get enrolled in the Double Up Food Bucks program. So our vistas do a lot of capacity building and helping our farmers access programs. I wanted to draw attention with our Veggie Vouchers program to our two house sites that every single year have the highest rate of redemption of vouchers among clients, always Black Hawk County Public Health, 80% of the vouchers that Crystal Schmitz gives to her clients in the Breasts and Cervical Cancer Program are redeemed at farmers' markets. And the overall, among all of our host sites this year, is about 63%. So Black Hawk County Public Health is really going above and beyond, and it's that relationship that Crystal has with her clients that makes her really successful. And then Jesse Cosby Center, that's Thea Black, who manages the senior center. She also, she's going to be upset, I think, this year that she wasn't at 80%, because she's, she and Black Hawk County Public Health are always right neck and neck. The 74% is also a huge achievement, especially with having so many clients. So just this year, we had about $20,000 spent on local food by clients, 26 farmers, which was every single one of our fruit and vegetable farmers, except for maybe one at the Cedar Falls, Waterloo, and Evansdale markets. And we have financial support from Mercy One, People's Community Health Clinic, and then a variety of grants every year. So another thing we do is increased food security, you know, that happens through the Veggie Vouchers program I just talked about, because that's money specifically for low-income populations to purchase fruits and vegetables. But another AmeriCorps started a program was a garden in every lot, where we essentially purchased a tiller and started conducting some outreach and installing gardens in people's backyards so that they can be producing more of their own food. So this is really about restoring interest in backyard gardening in our community. So since 2021, we've established 195 gardens through that program. It includes a couple of school gardens as well. We also, just last year with Black Hawk County Public Health, started a community garden in the Highland Neighborhood, which has really been tremendously successful. It has the interest from Highland Neighborhood and our immigrant and refugee populations. We're really, it grew, like, beyond the capacity that we predicted it would have. So we started with 48 plots last year. We doubled the size of that garden this year, and we established a second garden at Central Christian Church, which is over on the opposite side of Waterloo. And then another piece of that is we had connected some of those community gardeners who were growing enough produce for themselves that they also wanted the ability to sell. So we had 11 gardeners who collectively sold $20,000 of produce to the Northeast Iowa Food Bank this year. So that's huge. And now the rest of the 70 gardeners or so are asking me, how can we start selling some of our produce next year? So we're working with the food bank to get a large commitment from them, and then also going to be looking for some additional markets that they can tap into. So, and then the benefit of this, too, is they're growing culturally relevant products. They're growing African greens and different things that the pantries didn't have access to before. So they're able to serve their clients with culturally relevant products as well through this program. We do a lot of things to build the capacity of local farmers. I work mostly with our beginning immigrant and refugee farmers. Jody works with farmers on, in multiple counties, holding events, education events. A lot of these happen in wintertime, so we're just getting into, like, a big event time of the year, an education time of the year. So we host a producer-buyer networking event where we bring together farmers, and then also university dining services, restaurants, to have conversations about what products people have in the wintertime so that they can develop their contracts and what they're going to be growing to meet those purchasing contracts in spring. We host a farmer's market vendor workshop to, farmer's markets are the primary market that our farmers are selling their products right now. If you go to a farmer's market, you know, you're not going to be the only farmer selling tomatoes. There's going to be other people there. So it's helping people be competitive and successful businesspeople in our local food markets. We host a farm-to-fork dinner, which everybody is invited to, which is, we usually have a keynote or a panel and a really delicious meal made of all locally-produced products. So that's a fun one. And the Cedar Valley Farm Crawl is another one of our public-facing events where we take tours of different local farms. So that's a fun one where we partner with, we arose in Waterloo Bicycle Works to do a bike version and a driving version to get to those different farms. We support farmers through job creation and increased income. So these are four of the Cogalese growers that were growing at Highland Park. Teresa and Charlie, who are pictured with some of the produce grown that they donated or sold to Northeast Iowa Food Bank. And then this is Teresa and Freddie with their beautiful garden plot. And then, of course, they also benefit through being able to accept those veggie vouchers. I had one farmer this year who told me that between veggie vouchers and then the USDA-operated fruit, or Farmer's Market Nutrition Program, which are also check vouchers provided to seniors and WIC clients, that those vouchers are accounting for half of his income every single growing season. So they're very important to our farmers in having a source of income and customers each year. And then we also have a role in developing food systems leaders. So we are, you know, a university, and so we want to give back, too, and make sure that our students and young people can have a role in making agency in their community. So I'll let Sarah take over on this one.
Thank you. So I'm here because I work a lot with social capital. We really believe a lot of the people that we are fortunate to work with and partner with and meet, we want to invest in them to become agents of change within our community, within our county, and within our state. So I do serve statewide and partner with a lot of nonprofits. I partner with AmeriCorps members. We place members at nonprofits in our, in our food system work. We right now have 12 Nurish Iowa Vista members that are at seven nonprofits. They build capacity. They start projects. They do needs assessments. They write up storytelling features that we can use as qualitative data. We've had really great success in tapping into skill sets and enhancing young people who are passionate about making change in our communities. We had, just last fiscal year, we partnered with 245 UNI students, and we had just shy of 7,400 total people reached through our local food projects. Those include our clients and our community members. The most important piece that I feel with our social capital is meeting people where they're at, meeting their skill sets, finding what they're passionate about, to give them a place that they can be of service and they can make an impact in our community. And so that's what my role really works with.
That is all we had for you this morning. Did you want to say any last word?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, that's all we had this morning. So thank you very much for letting us take this opportunity to tell you about all our programs that we have at C-triple-E.
Any questions?
Excellent presentation. I really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you want to hand these out?
I do have directories here. Thank you, Catherine. Yes, this is one of the things that we do work to help promote our farmers and businesses supporting local food, as well as, again, getting a pretty good balance of the important stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We will now move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Veeder?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is $1,046,106.38, and the Sheriff's 60-40 Fund, we're making a payment of $2,542.76. And we are making capital payments today in the amount of $538,000, a little more than that, spending $358,000 from ARP funds, which is good to see going out, for things such as the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, the playground at Sigalco Park, and the McFarland Park septic system. And we're also out of grant funds or paying, making more payments on Cedar Valley Nature Trail, and starting to work on the Beaver Valley Wetland Project and the Heartland Erosion Control. And that's pretty much the large and significant ones today. Everything appears to be in order.
All right. Any questions, Schwartz? Seeing none, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
Paul.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item five, receive project updates from department heads, elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Last week, myself and a few others from the Roads Department staff, we participated in a road safety audit at the two intersections that we recently had fatalities in. A road safety audit is a statewide program offered to cities and counties from the Local Technology Assistance Program at Iowa State. So we had members of the Iowa DOT, federal highways, traffic engineers, traffic safety engineers. We went out and observed the intersection, and they are experts, and we, they were able to walk around the intersections, and they will be giving us a report probably by the end or the middle of December. They said they would get some information back to us, so we will continue to look at our intersections over the winter, and we'll come back to you with some recommendations or any changes we'd like to make. In other news, motor grader should be out this week. The conditions are ripe for the motor graders to be out. We're hoping there are a few, on the busier gravels, there are a few soft spots and potholes. We're hoping to get those filled back in before either more rain or the ground freezes. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other department heads, elected officials?
Good morning, Board. Ken Emmerich with Public Health. It's been a little bit since I've given an update, and since then, we've had a Board of Health meeting and an all-staff meeting, and so I just have a couple of updates from those things. First, from the public health system alignment, the statewide realignment that HHS is leading. I do have an update on that for the Board. HHS has let us know that the projected timeline to draft a prevention and early intervention bill that will include new public health service system will begin in early 2025. The intent is to have a draft policy proposal or bill ready to go for stakeholder feedback during the 2025 Health and Human Services Summer Tour, so this, next summer, in order to evaluate and refine it with stakeholder feedback prior to the 2026 legislative session. So it looks like they are going to allow some opportunity for us to give feedback into the drafting of that bill, which I'm very excited about and appreciative of. And then it looks like it will go in the 2026 legislative session. So that's kind of an update on that. And then just kind of some updates from Board of Health and from me. At our last Board of Health meeting, we did have a public hearing and updated our commercial garbage and trash haulers ordinance, so that will be coming to you for review soon. We also, at our next meeting, our November meeting, will be working on garbage, refuse, yard waste, and litter control ordinance. And so after the November meeting, assuming that that is passed by the Board of Health, will also come to you. So we're, we have a goal of looking at ordinances on a regular basis, and so we're just moving through the ordinance review process, no major changes to them, but we are recommending combining them. So just kind of look forward to those coming to the Board. There was also quite a bit of discussion regarding wastewater and private well system challenges that our environmental health team is running into in the Raymar area to meet setback requirements between wells and septic systems. And so I anticipate this could come up in the future as something that is hard to move past. The Board of Health has already granted a variance for that setback, where the distance between the well and the septic is supposed to be 100 feet, and a variance is required if you can't get that 100 feet. And what's, what the, what is happening is that these systems are getting older, they're in need of replacement, and when they were installed, that setback requirement was not in place, but it is in place now to ensure safe drinking water. And so that's something that our environmental health team has kind of brought to our attention. The Board of Health discussed it, and I anticipate we're going to want to have conversations with the Board of Supervisors as well on that. And right now, there's no urgent needs, but I anticipate we're going to need to resolve it before we have an urgent need in the future. And then just kind of a couple of programmatic updates. We have had a few site visits from Iowa Health and Human Services, including our Vaccine for Children site visit, and our first five-site visit. Our site visits continue to go very well, and so I just want to give a shout out to our teams that are kind of going through the oversight process and for those grants and contracts, and appreciate the work that they do. Any questions for me?
Yeah, this is Tom Little. The Raymar situation out there, we've dealt with that for years, and the bottom line is the lots are too narrow. There's no way that they can meet the guidelines on the new code as far as their septic system. So we've had a lot of people try to sell their properties, and they had liens because they couldn't improve their septic. So it's a big problem. I don't know what we're going to do, but the bottom line is their lots are narrow lots out there, and there's not enough room to do the work that they would have to do to meet regulations. So it's going to take some work out there on what we're going to do.
That's exactly right. That's exactly what the problem is that they're running into. And so, you know, there are a couple of options. Alternate systems may be an option. Really what was discussed at the Board of Health meeting, there was a representative from the Iowa Rural Water Association there, and he kind of shared some information that he had gathered regarding rural water or, or hooking into municipal wastewater. And so those were a couple of things that were discussed, but obviously, I mean, it was, there's a lot of work still to do.
Yeah. And the cost of the new system that they have to put in is almost unbearable for the people in that area. A lot of older people and stuff, they just can't afford it or anything. So it's been a problem, like I said, and I've worked with people out there a lot over the years.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And some of those, Caitlin, where you mentioned, he discussed some, have there ever been any implemented that we know of in a similar situation as Raymars?
Oh, other municipalities or, I mean, Raymar is an unincorporated area, but I don't know of, I don't have the historical knowledge. There may be someone that does have the historical knowledge. I am kind of curious about Washburn and kind of how Washburn transitioned from a community that was on private septics to being on a municipal system, and so that is the only one that I can think of that might be a similar model to look at. I'm sure there are models all across the country of, you know, how communities have dealt with the setback requirements that are in place to ensure that your wastewater doesn't interact with your drinking water, right? I mean, that's what the, that's what the concern is, but I, I don't have that readily available with me.
Okay. I just wondered, when you said someone spoke, I just wondered if they talked about ones that were in place or just alternatives.
Yeah. I think the gentleman from Iowa Rural Water Association could be a resource for us, but he did mention that his funding was ending, and so he isn't going to be in that role any longer, so.
There is, there is water or sewer out that way from either Evansdale or Elk Run, and there are a couple of houses that are connected to it, but it runs on the other side of the road, that main road there. And it would be quite costly for the owners that live deeper in to go there, but there is a sewer that goes out that way. I believe it's Elk Run, it could be Evansdale.
I think it's Elk Run that was discussed by the gentleman from Iowa Rural Water.
Yeah.
And if they were hooked into either a municipal or a rural water system, then the setbacks for the septic wouldn't be in play?
Wouldn't apply, right? Because it's really about a private well and a private water, wastewater disposal system, septic system. And so if you were, if the households were connected to one or the other, then, you know, the setback wouldn't be in place because they wouldn't be either using the wells or they wouldn't be using the septic systems.
I would, without knowing many details, I would think that that would be the more affordable infrastructure, would be the running of the water, but.
Yeah, that was, that was brought up at the meeting. That water would be more affordable because it's, you're running, A, the lines are kind of already there, and you're running the water out, which is a less expensive cost than running the wastewater back to the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay. Thank you.
So what are our next steps? Were you going to be having more discussions with others? Okay.
Jesus Christ.
Jesus Christ.
Yes. The hope is to continue those conversations. One of my, one of my next steps was just to kind of share with the Board the discussion that was had because we do need to think about a solution and, and how to support the community members that live in Raymar for, you know, exactly what Supervisor Little said. You know, when they do have an aging system that needs replaced, how to support them in ensuring that they have safe drinking water and, and a functioning wastewater system without a financial burden that is, you know, pretty, a lot more than what they are dealing with now. I guess I'll say it that way.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other department heads, elected officials? All right. Move on to the minutes approved from the November 5, 2024 meeting. So moved. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. An answer approved. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes. Resolution is approved. We move on to Section 8, Contracts and Agreements. Item A, this is a resolution that the agreement to provide $1 million to the Waterloo Development Corporation for the Court Works Project, previously approved on August 13, 2024, be acknowledged and signed by the Chair.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, I got an idea. Let's put a hold on that money and take that million dollars and pay for our capital equipment. Then we won't have to borrow money and pay interest on that money. It would make more sense.
All right. Any other discussion or questions?
Mike, you reviewed this. I know when it was just, it's similar to the other agreements that we've done or contracts.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it was fine. I was going to say, I didn't see any. For the obvious reasons, I won't support the contract, obviously. But it was just not that it's not a great project. Just looks like we have lots of infrastructure needs that we've got to take a look at, too.
All right. If there's no further discussion or questions, this is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
No.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to Item B. This is a resolution of the Contract slash Engagement Letter with Performance Resources insulting for Ted Garnett to assist Blackhawk County with the strategic planning process for the amount of $45,300 we approved and direct the Chair to sign the same.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions?
Did anybody have any? I know Ted said he hadn't heard from anybody. So I said I didn't want to send that, but I didn't give it to Mike to review till late last week because of it, so if that was.
No, I didn't have any questions about the contract. I'd say I was impressed with how my first session went with them. So I'm looking forward to, to working with them.
Yeah. I reviewed it. Everything looked good, even the travel accommodations, counting us sort of in local, I thought were, were great, so.
Yeah.
And yeah, my session was, was great with them as well, so.
Mine was, too. I was going to say, Mike just pointed it out and I wanted to be sure to mention it, too, that we were aware that there was, I forget, 70% of it was going to be paid upfront. And then so it was like, all right, with everybody though on that. Okay. I just.
Any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Item C, this is a resolution of the Contract Extension with Messingham Snow Removal Waterloo, Iowa, for snow hauling services at the rate of $100 an hour per dump truck, 200 an hour for 926 cat wheel loader usage, and 150 an hour for a 908 cal wheel loader usage with a minimum service amount of $500 per occurrence. Be approved and direct the Chair to sign for the same as recommended by Roy Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Roy?
Good morning, Board. Roy Giving, Facilities Director. Did want to make one correction. The section where it talks about awarded on 6/27/17, that actually needs to state September 21, 2021. So if we could make that correction. And then this is for a one-year contract extension at the rates that were agreed to back on that 9/21, 2021 date. We also had a caveat in there at that time. If you recall, that if we do get into a situation where we're looking like we're going to extend our cost for snow removal above 20,000, that we would seek Board approval before hitting that number. So all of that still applies for this one-year extension.
Are those rates pretty static?
That, that's actually, those rates will stay that way for this one year. And typically, we would ask for another three-year extension. But given, given those rates are already three years old, we felt like a one-year was sufficient, so.
Roy, did you check to see if they had current insurance?
I, I have not personally checked that, no. But we will definitely make sure that that is the case.
Any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. The resolution is approved. Item D, this is a resolution to approve the proposal for ACOM Technical Services Incorporated, provide professional services for engineering coordination and repairs to the sidewalk connecting the county jail and courthouse at a cost not to exceed $11,800. And authorize the Chair to sign as recommended by Roy Giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roy?
Just here for any questions. This is for the damage as a result of right waste management hitting our bottom portion of our sidewalk.
So is this something that eventually gets turned over for, does this cost go to us? Do we eat the cost ultimately? Or is this going to be reimbursed?
This will be reimbursed by insurance.
Okay, okay. Just making sure.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. We'll keep track of the cost and get that all submitted over to, to insurance.
Yeah.
Could have been a lot worse, I will say that. We have some good video if you'd like to see.
I've seen of others areas.
Yeah. Smee's got a thing for running the skywalks right now. All right. Any other further discussion or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Move on to Section 9, Other Business. Item A, this is a resolution to release the forgivable mortgage on property commonly known as located at 131 South Vine, West Union, Iowa, to Constan Tien Kep Nissis, to authorize the, the Board to sign and release the mortgage as submitted by Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, questions?
Do you want to comment on that at all, Michelle?
This is similar. We've already approved two of them. This property just hadn't met its 10-year forgivable requirement until the end of October. So that's why it's coming to you a little bit later. It'll be good to get these all off our plate.
Just the last one?
I believe so, because I understand it, yeah.
All right. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Little?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item B, this is a resolution declaring official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.5-2 to issue debt to reimburse the county for certain original expenditures paid by the county in connection with specific, specified projects as recommended by Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Michelle?
Just a little bit of background. If you remember, during the budget time, we did talk about how we wanted to fund future capital projects. And one decision that was voted on April 9 was that we would consider bonding for anything that was eligible for bonds. That amount is about 1.5 million. And subsequent to that, I did speak with our financial advisors, that's Sphere Financial. They indicated that it would probably be better to do a little bit larger issue at a time. So they were recommending we wait and do one issue in 2025 that would cover 24 and 25 projects. So in order to do that, we need to pass this resolution so that the departments can go ahead and pay for their projects. And this will allow us to reimburse ourselves with the bond money, should you choose to do it. If you choose not to, then it just doesn't matter. This is just a step to protect us, to allow us to do that.
Yeah. That's what you said last week. I think it was just somewhat a precaution that we knew need to.
Yes.
I mean, just in case we make that decision. Do you know which projects are off the top of your head? I know as far as there's one and a half million. I remember there was like 3 million or something like that and only half qualified for bond.
About two and a half million total. And so there's about a million that we're already using fund balance for because they currently don't qualify for bonding for counties because of some changes the legislature made. So I can, there's, I'm just going to look. I should have picked this up already.
I just happened to think of that, too, because I knew there were ones that they want to go forward with in this year, correct?
Yes. And they're, yes, we're, there, a lot of departments are making progress with, it's mostly design right now, which is allowed to be reimbursed anyway. But as they move to construction or purchasing items, we need to have this in place or it's not legal really to use bond money later. So, and the types of projects, oh, did I forget? It's in, there's a table in there. Some of the larger ones is the Hartman Reserve Erosion Control Project that we talked about, the Rotary Reserve, replacing windows and siding, security cameras for conservation, Beaver Valley Wetland, the engineering and construction of that viewing pier, and then the Sheriff's Office equipment. That's their typical vehicles, computers, all that sort of thing. And when we do equipment, I do generally, well, historically, the county has used very short repayment schedules for bonds. But when we do equipment, I generally try to front load that because I want the repayment time to match the life that we're using the equipment. So I don't want to pay for a car, for example, over 10 years. I would like that to be shorter. So we, we will do that one and if we get to the point that we're discussing that.
So this will really become, kind of go into play in the dates and when we do that, depending on what the 26 budget looks like and those items.
Yes.
Maybe.
So the wet, wetlands that you were talking about and some of the other items, they would fall under capital equipment?
Not equipment, but true capital projects that are allowed to be bonded for.
And when you say the cars, how many cars are you? We used to budget for three cars, wasn't it a year?
I believe it's actually five.
And we were paying for that out of operating budget? And we're going to bond for that now?
We, we were paying for it out of operating budgets. If you remember, the unpleasant discovery we had during the 2025 budget process is that we had reached our cap of how much we can tax under the base, general basic levy of $3.50. So you can't, we, we had to make choices. We, we could not do everything that we historically did from the operating budget because there wasn't enough capacity. So one of the choices that was made was to keep our operations whole, was that we might have to borrow. And, and we can do it on a fairly short-term, turn, payback to reduce interest costs and things. But what that does do is it does allow you to use the debt service levy, a different levy to repay it.
So we'd be making that decision in the future, probably, I mean, once we have a little more information?
Correct. Yeah. Once we get, once we are working on the 26 budget and get the capital requests and we can filter out what we want to do.
And we've sort of consistently over the last few years sort of declined in usage of that, right? Where we probably need to, amongst the five of us, have a real conver, amongst all of us, right? Have a conversation of where do we want that, that piece to be? So that folks, yes, our 350 is one thing. But what we're bonding for, how much variation we want year over year? Because the variation is where the headache comes for folks. If, if we can sort of have a, a discussion of where we want to be collectively, I think it would help.
And I was going to wait till later in the meeting because we talked about that work session, having a work session on budget and kind of being a little more frayed on that end. And Michelle, I don't know if you still feel like the 26 works for you as far as having that information?
I believe we'll have some draft information as an audit firm, so that we can do that then.
I know, requiring some stuff from you, too. So thank you. But I just thought that worked for everybody.
That's great.
And I believe there's a point of information we do bond that is the one time that we can access TIF property tax revenues for the debt service levy.
You can. And we did, the projections that I showed you, I did do some with that. If I remember correctly, I think it, it changed the levy by maybe three cents. It's, it wasn't, it's not a huge amount, but it does, it does work that way, so.
So question I have then, Michelle, we're going to bond every year we buy squad cars?
I think that's a choice that we will make each year as we evaluate the budget. You know, I can't predict what will happen, but possibly, possibly.
And the cost of that, obviously, is something you'd evaluate, too, as far as what that falls into category wise of size.
Yep.
Do you know what interest rates are currently?
They've been, they've been coming down. I believe the solid waste, can't remember if that was around 3%. So it's, it's still fairly conservative rate. It's not, not super high. But I mean, you never want to pay interest if you don't have to, right? It's another expense, but.
I don't really have a concern with projects, but the capital equipment should not be in bond and borrow money and paying interest for. The sheriff's fleet, we rolled it over in roughly 2006. The whole fleet, we leased them and then eventually brought it out, bought everything out and paid for it. Then we start budgeting every year cars. Now we are to the point where we were back then borrowing money to put our cars on the road. I, I think we're headed down a slippery slope. Again, obviously, you all know I'm against giving away money. We give billions of dollars away, but yet we're going to borrow money to pay for a capital equipment that makes no sense whatsoever.
Any further discussion or questions?
Sounds like some legislative changes this year again, too, so.
Yeah.
We'll see.
All right. This is a resolution. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder. Dan, I don't hear you. Is he gone?
Yeah, he's gone.
Hall?
Of course. Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item C, this is a motion upon the retirement of Deputy Tony Thompson on December 31, 2024. He be gifted his duty service weapon as is policy of Blackhawk County to gift a deputy sheriff with his duty service weapon, provided he leaves the county employment in good standing if you voluntary retirement in accordance with the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System, established guidelines and regulations.
Now that you're finished, second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Item 10, any reports or information from the Board?
Only comment I'll make is last week I was having a conversation with Kathy Only comment I'll make is last week I was having a conversation with Kathy and she, and we were talking, you know, about the Ted Garnett sessions coming up and, and looking at the month of December even for the second one. And she asked the question about our board meeting in December, I think around the Christmas holiday. We've got Tuesday, the 24th, will be closed in the 25th, so if we meet, then it would need to be a Monday or Thursday. If, so just to be considering that. I just thought I, I didn't think that far out, but it's not far.
Yeah.
Thanks. Not to be decided today. I just met Grant. I don't think about it. Thank you.
All right. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, this meeting is adjourned.